Good morning, July 2nd, 2019. I hereby call the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order. And if you would like, feel free to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hiddens. Olson.
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is approved. Next, we have public comment, number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics that are on today's agenda. So if anybody would like to make some remarks about any agenda items, please come to the microphone there. Seeing nobody, move to the microphone, I'll close public comment. Next, we have agency reports. We have none today. Consideration of minutes of June 25th. Have you all had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I, uh, it's a motion to approve the June 25th minutes.
Is there a second?
I accept.
Okay. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are accepted. Consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the action forms as listed?
I move that we approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions. Consent agenda, we are going to pull item six by our neutral consent, and is there, and we will talk about that next week. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda less item six?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item six, which has been pulled.
I second that motion.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda less item six is approved. Now we go on to public hearing items, of which we have none. So next, we are at additional items. Ten, one is the fiscal year 2019 annual report of the Story County Economic Development Group, Drew Camp and LeAnn Harder. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. We don't have an official presentation. I will just kind of kick it off and let Drew take over as chair of the Story County Economic Development Group. We did forward a copy of the fiscal year 2019 annual report to the board prior to the meeting, and it is on today's agenda. This is something that was added to the recently adopted bylaws of the Economic Development Group, so this is the first time you will have seen, as an entity, an annual report. With that, Drew, I'll hand off to you.
Thank you, LeAnn. Thank you, Supervisors Merkin, Hiddens, and Olson. As you'll see in the fiscal year 2019 annual report, on the first page, I'm going to walk through it kind of briefly. You'll see checkmarks based on every one of the communities in Story County. The reason that those are recorded the way they are is that the requirements of the Story County Economic Development Group say if you are to receive assistance from the county funds that are allocated, which is $110,000 per fiscal year, you have to attend three-fourths of the meetings. And as you can see, everyone except McCall'sburg qualified in that regard, and that's noted below, that they did not attend and require a number of meetings, so they were not allocated or appropriated any funds of that $110,000 that the county board grants to the Story County Economic Development Group. That then brings us to the second page, which kind of sets the tone a little bit for how the funds are broken out. As I mentioned, there's $110,000 of funding given to the Story County Economic Development Group, and it kind of splits in two ways. The annual allocation, which is the base amount for attending the meetings and being certified within the county, plus the per capita distribution of funds allocated to Board of Supervisors. But then there's also project funds, which used to be pool funds. This year, we had $16,500 to allocate to qualified projects throughout the county. I won't go through each of the eligibility requirements. You can kind of see about those 10 bullet points as to what is required if you receive any of those funds. We've amended those recently, as LeAnn mentioned, with some of the bylaw changes that we've done. We've firmed up kind of qualifications, and also the fact that you can only apply for one grant application for a maximum of $2,500. That was something we were having a little bit of an issue with, so we clarified that this year with this board.
I want to ask more about that when it's appropriate. If you want to run your account, or we can talk right now about the fact that these applications, you've got $10,000 from Story City, we had Collins ask for more, Cambridge asked for more, Huxley asked for more. So in all of those instances, are you saying that bylaws did not say a maximum of $2,500 before? So these applications...
They predated the action on the bylaws. Okay. Thank you.
So after we had that issue, we said we need to firm this up, so we did. So this year, when we have these conversations, there'll be a lot more clear parameters as to what that entails, and what that looks like, and what the request should be. Because as you can see, the $10,000 request is completely kind of off-base with regards to how much funds we have as regards to development.
And these are the same amount of funds, just for perspective for my colleagues on the board. This is basically the same amount of money that has been given over the last three or four years, at least. So when you do the percentages, et cetera, it's very close to what the funds are available for these projects. So it's not like Story City especially was not aware of how much would be available to try and divide.
Thank you. And as we go to the next page where it breaks down the allocations for each of the different subsections within that budget, you can see, obviously, the first line is the population, which is obviously very important for capita breakdown that the communities are getting. But then you'll look at the pool funds and the base. Each qualifying community, Sands, McCall'sburg, as we mentioned before, are receiving the $500 and $1,500. But then the certification is that number, then where that algorithm comes in based on per capita, and that's why Ames obviously has the biggest amount, followed by other communities based on population. And then you'll see then the total fiscal year, and then any project funds that those communities received, which then averages out to, or just giving totals out, to the $110,000 allocated by the Board of Supervisors. And then there's also below there a breakout of what the projects were, and what each community had requested, and then what the description of the project was, just to give you an idea of what it was, what their request amount was, and what they all received to make that $16,500 we had available.
I do have a question about why you've got still listed pool funds with a $500 across the board, and then base separated out with a $1,500 across the board. We're not using the term pool funds anymore, and pool funds used to be what we now call the project funds down here, if you go down your different categories on the left-hand side. So can you please explain why you're still using that pool funds $500? Why don't you just don't mix it with the base? And then let's not get rid of that confusion.
Yeah, that's a good point. This is a spreadsheet that's been handed from chair down to chair to chair, and has made its way over to my desk now, is for providing technical assistance, and I just didn't catch that.
Okay.
The spreadsheet goes back years and years, and so I'll change it from this point going forward.
Okay. All right. And is it anticipated, based upon discussions so far, that it'll just be, then the base will be $2,000 per community, given that we keep the same groups of communities? Or are you going to look at a formula where you want so much minimum for project funds, and therefore your base could shift a little bit? Because if McCall'sburg had qualified, they'd have received $2,000, which would have then, using this particular formula, brought down the allocation available to $14,500. So has the board talked about that yet?
We haven't talked about that in detail, no, but I can tell you that we have had a point at which all the communities qualified, and we did just use that amount. So we had, you know, that's obviously, in that case, I think it was $15,000.
Yeah. Okay.
And going back about 15 years or so ago, the Economic Development Group used to be in the habit of carrying over funds as well, not awarding project funds to any of the, not necessarily to any of the entities, but limited amounts and carrying forth in anticipation, either the labor shed study or other anticipated expenses. Now, the labor shed study, that expense is no longer included through this. So that does allow additional funding. Sorry, I'm getting cold, so trying to talk is difficult. Additional funding is helpful for future projects.
And just so you're aware, Idea, Iowa Economic Development Authority, Deputy Ersch, picked up the cost of doing the labor shed.
So we're still going to get a labor shed study every other year or something, right?
That's the plan.
But we don't have to worry about helping pay for it anymore?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. So do you have anything else? I have a couple of questions.
The only other thing I wanted to touch on is the fact that if you go towards the back, on the back page, I won't go through each of the things we went, talked about this year, but I think that I wanted to highlight the amendments to bylaws. That's where we went in and made those changes to the county funding program, firmed up the parameters and the definitions of what qualifies and what amounts. But then also for upcoming items, you'll see we have the joint meeting in October with the Board of Supervisors, that is something new. But then also, just to give you an idea of some of the items that we may be looking at as far as outside presenters, is someone from the Iowa Economic Development Authority can talk about the Catalyst Grant or the Nuisance Abatement Program, which are several of our communities that have received that Catalyst Grant, three actually. And then USDA Rural Development, Iowa Area Development Group, Iowa Finance Authority, those are the kind of groups that we really want to make sure we're bringing in to educate people because they have really applicable resources, whether it be with housing, rural development, obviously, community and economic development. So those are really helpful resources. So that is all I wanted to make sure we highlighted. I welcome any other questions you may have.
Well, I think this may answer it. September 30th, applications for county funding program projects due, that's the projects line here, projects by community.
That's correct.
So when would you be looking at making recommendations there?
The October 4th meeting.
October, at the 24th, the joint meeting? Okay.
And that's already been made clear, there's been requests or notifications sent out to all the communities that they can expect those dates sometime.
I would like to make certain that, I would like to hopefully be the July 18th meeting when you're electing your officers, and I can't be there that day, I'll be out of town. But the Housing Needs Assessment Survey needs to get started, and the previous board had voted that it would originate through the Story County Economic Development Group. If I understand this correctly, if we're going to follow the procedure that originally we'd worked through before and discussed, we'd be looking at needing an RFP for that. But that, LeAnn, that's your expertise there, all right? To refresh everyone's memory, that when I originally talked to ISU and to RDG, who did the original housing needs study for the county back in 1997, the previous one, all right, they both gave me a price between $60,000 and $70,000. That included Ames at the time. As the previous board talked through this, Ames with their comprehensive plan wasn't able to really sign on, but they were going to end up collecting a great deal of the information that would be used in this housing needs study anyway. The other factor was Iowa Finance Authority then announced that they were going to put out a statewide kind of report. When the statewide came out from Iowa Finance Authority, which is the reason that the previous board had held dedicating funds, it turned out only Ames, some Ames demographic information was in there. There was county, but there were not anywhere near the specifics in either one of those that met what was hoped would be an updated housing study. And so, but there is enough data in there, combined with many years having passed since 1997, that the two consulting agencies I talked to both said that the price, if Ames isn't included, would be significantly lower, and just data collection has changed. Most of this data, except for the really small communities, is now available already in some database. And so I think we're now looking at $35,000 to $40,000. That's just, I mean, that's just based upon my conversations. So that would be anticipated, looking at kind of what the RFP expectation might be to start with. That's LeAnn's bailiwick, all right? And the other thing that our group had talked about, the board in turning it over to the Story County Economic Development Group to be the lead agency, is while LeAnn would provide technical support like she does now, that that group would have the time buy-in, not the physical or financial buy-in, but the time buy-in into it to do all of the other communities, and so that they also would be picking the people who would be sitting on a committee. They'd be working with the consultant. LeAnn, is that how you kind of remember the basic discussion?
Roughly, right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Drew, anything to add? Okay. So that's my request to you once again. Please get this started. Nevada has approached me, as you know, and said, "We need this started. It will take a while to get it up anyway." And if, because of Burke, and if our board chooses not to do something with it, because we have not discussed this, but certainly we know demands for funds are coming forward too, so I just really want to put that...
So there's not a funding source identified yet for this study?
No, there is not a funding source. There was an anticipation that it would come from general funds, most likely from the money that we get off of the regular tax levy rate for the wind turbines, was always kind of anticipated on that. We knew it would have to be general funds. It doesn't qualify for TIFT funds.
And then $35,000 to $40,000, that's your own estimate, being told significantly less, or did you get that estimate? Did somebody mention that?
They told me. The consultants did. One was with Iowa State University, I'll have to pull it out. They have a team that does this through the extension. And then the other one was one of the people, there is still a person, RDG, down in Des Moines, who worked on the original study in 1997. It took several phone calls, but I tracked her down. And they both said, yes, it could be 30% less. And so, you know, I just kind of looked at what they're saying here, and that's where I went, the 35 to 40, could be a little higher.
I can see where it might be difficult to put together an RFP and put together, get a process going if there isn't a funding source yet determined. So I'm thinking that that might rest with us, and I'm thinking we'll need some more information about where the 20 budget's coming down to be able to do that. Does that make sense?
It does.
It does.
Yeah.
So it's on, it's there, we just don't have everything put together yet to say, yes, we know that, you know, we're not putting out an RFP without having a funding source identified.
Correct. I agree with that. I know, we've got kind of a chicken/egg here. I'm just urging them this morning on the, I guess, chicken part will be the egg, okay? But that because the Story County Economic Development Group only meets quarterly, so if the board needs to give the president and/or chair and technical staff more direction to go ahead and start, once we would identify, if we vote for a funding source for that, so that they don't have to wait until October. That's where I'm really headed, is to make sure we've got as many of the approvals in place subject to others.
What do you think we can say, change?
It's urgent.
Okay. If you're not going to be able to go, well, maybe Supervisor Hiddens or I could attend.
That'd be great. Just a super question, we'll check on that. I do have a couple of questions for, and I'm not sure Drew to answer LeAnn, just being new, and so just some clarification. So on the pool funds and base, those are just dollars that go straight to those communities that met the criteria, is that correct? Okay. And then the certification, that's based on per capita, and does that just automatically go to those communities based on that criteria as well? Okay. Okay. And then the special projects are ones that they apply for?
It's also those parameters to manage.
Right. Right. So, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
I think I'd like to point out one thing that a previous board had discussed, that it may come to us for budget year next year, when we're having budget discussions, that the bylaws, as noted, were updated recently. And part of the previous board discussion, a couple of years ago at least, possibly even a board preceding me, was that if you guys would update your bylaws, we might look at giving you some more money. And I think it had to do with tightening up, how much money could come from various groups, et cetera. So I just wanted to point out, the 110 has been there for a few years, and they were told that if they took care of their bylaws and got this more orderly, that there would be an option of the, that board at least, looking at a slight increase. I believe they were talking about up to $125,000, 125 instead of 110. Just wanted to mention that, since it's the annual report time. There was no obligation, and there should be no obligation, but it might be something we want to look at next budgeting, that'd be heading into fiscal year 21.
I was just going to suggest that when we get into our budget work sessions, we discuss it then.
Okay.
So, okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Report. Next, LeAnn?
No, I forgot my folder.
Okay. LeAnn Harder is going to update us on Homebase Iowa Program, Welcome Home to Story County Relocation Assistance.
Good morning again.
Good morning, the second time.
What I did put on your, in your places before the meeting was the award letter from the Story County Housing Trust Fund that I received via email yesterday. I did forward the contract for that onto Ethan Anderson for his review, and if all looks well, we'll get on your guys' agenda next Tuesday. But we were awarded $17,600. A small portion of that is for administrative costs. The remainder goes towards low incomes, at or below 50% area median income, and so that has a whole different component of record-keeping that goes with it. But that is, that program and that award is really one of the drivers of the proposed changes on the Homebase Iowa Program. I'm just going to highlight some of the proposed changes. The Welcome Home to Story County Iowa is a relocation assistance program for veterans returning back to Iowa. It follows on the heels of our Homebase Iowa designation in 2012, 15? 2015, yes, 2019, 2015, which was part of Governor Bransett's initiative for the Welcome, or for Homebase Iowa Program. We are Homebase Iowa County, so it applies to all the communities within Story County as well. Annually, the board budgets funding for the Welcome Home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program, up to $10,000. And actually, last fiscal year, we, I think, came very close to using the entire funds, which is really good. The proposed modifications are noted on the memo with underlining in red or strikeouts, but I'm going to go through them quickly, as long as my voice holds up. Specifically for eligible uses of the funds, for the up to $2,500, we're clarifying that rent deposits and rental assistance, which would be a new program, the rental assistance component, do have some additional levels of requirements that go with them. And I want to back up for down payment assistance for home purchases. If someone does want to use that, the funding for down payment assistance, it goes directly from Story County to the lender at the time of closing. So it's not reimbursable, like all the others are. And then for rent deposits, same thing, it goes right to the landlord, or same principle goes right to the landlord. And then rental assistance, because of the Housing Trust Fund monies, we have the opportunity to have two different pools or two different venues those qualifying veterans can use. If they would qualify under the income guidelines for the Housing Trust Fund, that would be up to $2,000 for rental assistance through that program, and then the board supervisors can add the additional 500 under the $10,000 that's budgeted to get to $2,500. And that is directly to the landlord. The agreements are set up, again, if they fall under that Housing Trust Fund, there's a whole other amount of paperwork that go with that. But if they don't fall under the income guidelines, the way we've set up, it would just be $2,500 set up through the board supervisors, too, again, directly to the landlord or leasing agents. Then the other qual, or other criteria that were, are proposed to be modified is specifically in regards to eligibility criteria. For, when we first started the program, we had a requirement that they be employed in a Homebase Iowa business located in Story County. A couple of years ago, we struck that out, and it's actually been a little bit problematic. So what we're proposing to do is simply say be employed in a full-time position within Story County. We have a number of Homebase Iowa businesses within Story County, actually, that the opportunity to become a Homebase Iowa business has become much, it's become easier to go through that process, so we continue to see that grow. But this is a workforce development tool, one of our tools in that toolkit, and so we're looking at those individuals that are coming here seeking full-time employment in Story County. And then again, another on eligibility, another notice, if you're using funds, they qualify through the Story County Housing Trust Fund, you need to be aware, there will be some additional requirements. Are there any questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate you taking a look at the wording there, and so that it's, everybody really is on the same page on that. So thank you, LeAnn.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the program modifications to Welcome Home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program.
I would so move that just as presented.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. LeAnn, thank you. Now we have Joby for RFP for Architectural Engineering Design Services for the HVAC replacement for the jail.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Yep, this is to release a request for proposals to obtain bids for architectural engineering services to replace the aging and obsolete HVAC equipment. At the Justice Center, this is a capital improvements project for FY '20. This is the first phase of a three-phase project. This focuses on the jail, portion of the jail where they house the inmates. We chose that to start with because it's our most vulnerable area, because if we lose equipment there, we, depending on weather conditions, there's the potential we'd have to relocate inmates. Ran into that. Laura remembers back in January 2018 when we did lose one of the rooftop units, and got down to 40 degrees Fahrenheit in one section of the jail.
Just curious, where should we locate to?
We didn't have to relocate the inmates out of the facility, but if we would have had, I think it was less than half a dozen more inmates, we would have had to move them to a different county.
Got you.
It's expensive.
Yes. Yeah, because I think that they were looking at a hundred and some dollars a day per inmate if we had to relocate them. Any specific questions? Go ahead.
I do, because I always have.
Well, of course.
So perhaps it is just because I've had construction management on my mind the last couple of days, all right? But we've got the construction management oversight, there, you know, they call it a variety of terms here, but in this contract, we've got it split out as separate. And I don't remember previous contracts for architect design services reading this way. Is it just that I don't remember it from former ones, or is this a new way of, a new type of contract?
No, it's pretty standard, yeah.
Okay.
We've done other ones in the past.
So the reason construction management is on my mind is that, as we're taking a look at the cost of projects...
Yes.
Are we remembering to include that as an estimate of what the entire project is going to cost?
Yes. Yes. I estimated what I felt the architectural engineering fees would be, and I included that into the dollars that we budgeted.
For the CIP?
Yes.
Okay. Super, then. Then my other one is, as you've sat here over the last two and a half years and listened to my pet peeve, is that we make sure that all the bidders know that Story County does not pay a surcharge or percentage to the consultant for third-party billings and fees and on orders for paper, et cetera. for third-party billings and fees and on orders for paper, et cetera. That's a, that's kind of just a, I'm going to use a term that was in the, the home loan industry when I worked in it many years ago, okay? It's called a garbage fee. It's another way to generate income. And to, it usually is not earned. So please, if we could add that somewhere here to make note that we don't do that.
Okay.
Okay, if it's okay with you guys. And I have asked to be stricken from contracts before too, like the architectural contract for the animal shelter, so.
Can you, do you know what we need? And can you add it without needing to bring the RFP back another, another time? Because we don't want to.
Have delays.
I don't think so. When we got January 6th as a project completion, I certainly do not care to see any delays in it.
I see a listen nodding, yeah.
You can just approve it with that additional language to cover that.
Do you want to say what the language would be?
Sure. I wrote it out. Here, hold on just a second.
Why don't you read it and then you can provide it to Shelley later for the minutes.
I will, since I find it on the right note. Okay, I would move that we accept this contract as presented with the addition that it is noted under conceptual plan, the bulleted item that says "A proposed fee structure based upon the plan of work proposed by the vendor," period. We would add note, "Story County will not pay the vendor a surcharge percentage on third-party fees and costs," period. And I will provide that then to Shelley immediately after.
Do you second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Biddens?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are on to consideration of bid award to BECO Development and Construction for Hickory Grove Beach House for $291,459. Mike Cox, and Mike, before you start talking, I want to congratulate you on the successful, very successful opening of the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor last Friday. That was a wonderful event, well-planned out and everything, things are looking good. So job well done.
Very good. Well, thank you. And thank you for attending all of this.
Mike, can you move back over to just Mike?
How's that? Is that better? All right, yeah. Thanks for, thanks for those remarks and thanks for attending. There are no, we're guessing, we maybe had 400 people there on Friday, so.
I wondered if you got an account.
It was a tremendous, tremendous event. So, thank you. As you know, we opened bids, oh golly, a couple of weeks ago on the beach house replacement project at Hickory Grove Park. The, this was in the, oh, let's see, the 2019 budget to get that beach house replaced. And it's an original beach house, so it was built in the late 60s and in very poor condition. We went through a design process and really have a very modest design on this building. It is essentially, it's a prefab building for unisex restrooms, a rinse station, exterior rinse station, if you will, and, and then a small concession area. So it's a really modest footprint, modest design. The bid that we did get, we only got, received one bid and that bid was over engineer's cost opinion, as you, as you see, by about 15%. That caused us some concern, if you will, on how to move forward with that. So in concert, in concert with our engineers, we took a closer look at the bid numbers. All of the bid numbers were comparable to the cost estimate with the caveat of the building itself. So all of the numbers, except from the building, were comparable, what we would expect. The building costs were higher. And frankly, the reason those building costs were higher is because our cost opinion didn't include everything it needed to include. That's the, that's the reason why. So we looked at this and we looked at a number of options. Do we just reject the bids and go back out, bid again? Do we reduce this, reject bids and reduce scope and rebid, do it a different scope? Or do we move ahead and try to find that additional money and move forward with the project? Since it looked like it was a reasonable bid, number one. And number two, since it's a, since it's already, as I said, kind of a modest building, there's no frills in this building. There's really nothing that, that jumps out at you for rebidding or respecifying the building. Conservation Board met last Friday and decided that they recommended that we move forward with a bid award. And that that additional money would come out of conservation reserves for that additional money. So at the moment, the way this project was budgeted was a split between general fund money and energy transfer fund money. And the board felt strong enough about, the Conservation Board felt strong enough about that, that they recommended we move forward and that those additional monies come out of conservation reserves, either trust fund or energy transfer fund. And, and that we also move forward with trying to do some additional private, private donations or private fundraising. So with that, I would entertain any questions and ask that you move forward with this bid award. Then I, if, if that's the decision today, then I'll come back forward with a contract when we have that ready.
Maybe just a clarification for the record. I checked with Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley and she believes that all of it was $250,000 was all general fund from her records.
Yeah, so Lisa, is Lisa in here? Oh, so Lisa considers the ETF, Energy Transfer Fund, is essentially in the general fund.
Well, let's, let's clarify just for the record, so we know where.
Do you have the resolution for the funds for the general, for the energy transfer funds? I didn't have it noted anywhere, Mike, that it was ETF. And I don't think it's in the, it's in the, the resolution that the board did originally for commitment. So if you want to use that.
Just if we need to clear it out.
If we need to clear it up, then we can. But I do not, oh, I need the other one. The other sheet.
The other sheet.
That one.
This?
No. The original commitment of funds did not talk about that one at all. About the Hickory Grove Beach House. So I can, the board can do a new commitment and say that they want to, that you want funds committed for that also. That's, that's totally fine. I just don't have that as a committed part of the EFT.
Understood. And I think that when we did the budget work session for the FY '19 budget is when we discussed that split out. And so therefore, we probably never did anything with it.
Yeah, I didn't note it at all. So I just want to make sure that if that's going to be used, then that's fine. I just, we need to document that because when you commit funds, when the board commits funds, the only way to uncommit funds is by another resolution. So we need to be clear as to where those funds are at.
So in this particular case with the 41,000, because we're over on this bid, right, by 41,459 from what we budgeted in the CIP. The $250,000 for this project from the CIP, that's how I look at it. So then, $250,000, I believe, was the amount that was carried over then when it moved up into fiscal year 19. Because this was a fiscal year 19 project originally, correct, from in the CIP? It was still $250,000. And what you're saying in this particular instance is the extra $41,459 are a result of the bid not including everything it needed to include, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then.
Well, no, let me, let me rephrase that.
Sure.
The bid included what the bid needed, what needed to be included was included in the bid. The, the difference was that our cost opinion.
Okay.
Is where it was off.
Got you.
And who, and who does the cost opinion? The architect?
The architect.
Okay. So let's clear up the money thing first and then I want to come back and ask some questions about the contract with the architect, okay? But let's go ahead on that for, so my next question. General fund that we are referencing is the general fund monies that we've already kind of allocated for conservation, correct? At least the 22 cents per, not our general fund. I, I want to clarify that.
It's all general funds.
Yeah, okay. So as we're sitting there and saying how much we're going to allocate for conservation to spend and budget as a department, are the general funds, even though there are general funds, are they budgeted, will they come out of the budgeted amount for conservation? They will. So conservation will have to make some adjustments somewhere else to allocate for the $41,000.
I don't think that's what he's asking, but is that what you're asking?
For me, my question right now is so that I know what pot of money we're really dealing with here. I know it's all our general funds, but when we set a budget and we say we're, we are giving so much, spending so much out of the general fund specifically for conservation projects and we give you a dollar amount. And I want to make sure that this 41,459, as we're discussing that right this second, is talking about out of the conservation budget, general, that general funds allocated to conservation budget, correct?
You're not asking us for additional general funds for this other than what we've already allocated, correct?
Correct. I'm not asking for additional. With the caveat.
Yeah, see, that's where I'm headed here.
With the caveat that the energy transfer fund is, according to Lisa, it is in the general fund.
So you would be.
The, the energy transfer fund, when we received that, the 1.6 million, there was a board resolution at that time that the Conservation Board would, what's the wording I'm looking for? But that funds would be expended in coordination with, or consultation approval from the Conservation Board.
You guys get to pick how you spend that money, pretty much.
But you have to come here to uncommit it.
So, correct.
So it's committed fund. That's where I'm after. Let me ask it a different way. We are not talking about you wanting $41,459 from what is, we consider our reserve, what's left over after everybody's committed aside, et cetera. Is that right? You're not looking for one dime out of that?
I'm not, I defer that to Lisa. I'm not versed on what you consider the reserve.
Right, because the energy transfer funds are committed funds. That's what she's telling you about the resolution. That's what I just want to make sure, is that, that, yeah. Okay, thank you, Lisa, for that.
So to clarify the finances on this, we had $250,000 budgeted, part out of general fund and part out of energy transfer fund in the general fund. And then we budgeted some partners revenue to go toward it as well, another 20,000. That creates 270,000. Our bid of 291,000, to get to look at a whole picture, then we add to that our engineering fees. And then we need to add to it the question you asked, Joby.
Yeah.
Which, which is the, we call it CACO, Construction Administration, Construction Observation Fees that we'll have.
So Mike, why aren't those included in the 250,000 on the CIP plan? And I'm really pointed in this, okay?
Sure.
Because we discussed.
So when we did that, we didn't, we don't know, we don't, the 250,000 in the CIP is an estimate.
No.
Based on no, based on no engineering done at that point at all.
We, in 2018, in the budget hearing for conservation in 2018, and then again in 2019, both made comment. I made comment in 2018 and in 2019, we had an actual discussion about how, my concern about how conservation numbers for estimates in CIP seem to be low, historically and always low. And you were requested at that time for the 2019, in January of 2019, to make sure that the CIP numbers that we approved in March of 2019 reflected all costs as, as really best estimates, all right?
Correct.
So 250 wasn't accurate even then because there are these additional costs, if I am understanding. I know we're ahead of just finding out just how much more it is. But you were requested of that.
Yeah, and we did that. We didn't know.
It still says 250 in our capital improvement.
We didn't know at that point what these building costs or building prep site costs were going to be.
I understand about the building costs.
So we estimated at that point based on the best estimate that we had. The, all the information that we had in front of us is how we built that estimate.
So then I'm going to come to the contract with WHKS, the architect. And what I addressed was Joby already. Did you not know that we still were going to get, that you were going to negotiate a construction management fee?
Absolutely, we knew that.
Well, then why was that not with the $250,000?
Okay, so I don't put that in the original contract because we don't know if we're going to go ahead with a bid award. That is why I never put a CACO fee or contract in with a engineering contract. Because if we don't award the bid, then that's a moot point.
Well, it is, but Mike, I would say this, that if you put it there, if you put it there, it's there rather than having to come back later and say, "Oh, now we need more money." You kind of get it on the table. And I guess that's the thing that I would say is the next time, maybe to think about adding, you know, a CACO. And I don't know if the 250 included a contingency. There was some discussion of that on the last Friday. That maybe, you know, maybe there's, you know, maybe to back up a step and as you are planning projects in the future, to kind of work those, work those in, even though you say, "Oh, we'll figure it out later." I, I'm personally the kind of person who, and I'll speak for myself, but I like to see all of the possible expenses, you know, in the planning from the beginning. And, and, you know, you've said now that you have the money, you can use the energy transfer funds to cover these costs. We're very glad, you know, to hear that, you know, that those can be utilized, that they're there for this. I just say, let's, let's try in the future, maybe to get a few more of the things nailed down earlier. That might, that might help. And I don't know what it was in the building. It sounds like your, your big thing was, there was something in the building that didn't, didn't get in the cost estimate, but did get in the RFP, so.
No, the costs were off on it, right?
He said that all, all the functions of the building or something did not get into the engineer's cost estimate, but they, they were obviously in the RFP because they were bid.
Correct.
Yes.
There was a difference, the difference was in basically the building setting. So taking the prefab building and putting it on-site, that's where those costs were off that didn't all get wrapped into the estimate.
I'd just kind of like to summarize and let's say, let's take this as a learning moment. What we can do differently in, maybe in the future.
I know what the board can do differently in the future. As we head in, in October, or we're going to be working on the instructions that will go out to staff about budgeting. There's a set of instructions that go every year. In the past, this, they have been issued by a previous chair, okay? In addition, that's when the staff begins looking at the CIP, what they think actually will be their CIP. We can. We can issue instructions at that time that state specifically what we want included in the CIP. And that's the time to say, you will include any contingency fund. You will include that we'd rather know about a multi $10,000 fee for construction management and then not spend it, rather than sitting here and finding out how much underwater a project really is.
Yeah, I think it just gives us a broader total picture of it. And, yeah, you don't have to allocate the total amount or approve the total amount, but at least you've got a general idea.
And if we haven't asked for that before, that's, you know, that's on us.
Right.
So we can, we can go do that for everybody, so everybody understands. I think we can keep it fairly simple, but just to make sure that you're estimating, you know, people are estimating all their costs there, even if they're ballpark, they're helpful. So, it's my thought.
Sounds good.
Is that...
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so, Mike, is there anything else that you, you want to tell us about this before we consider it?
No.
So I said I had some questions about the contract. I do have one more. Just how far underwater will, do you expect us to be on this? I say underwater as related to the 250,000 that's in the CIP.
Because I don't know what that CACO is going to be.
Construction, okay.
Excluding that, we're at about 320,000.
So we're 70,000. Let's say usually, construction management, for all the years I covered it and all kinds of different government entities, is going to run at least 10% of the project.
It goes seven.
Huh?
I used to go seven.
Seven, seven to 10, another 30,000. So we're about $100,000 off on the estimate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So the energy trans, the energy transfer fund still has, what, a million plus in it?
1.3 approximately.
Pardon?
1.3 has not been spent.
Okay, so at least that is, there's money there. Okay, thank you. My next con, my next question is on the cost estimates that the architect did. Is there anything in that contract itself that allows us to recover some of this 41,000 from them under their insurance or errors in admissions, et cetera? I mean, this 41,000 is 15% off on a bid estimate.
Not sure how to answer that question.
Can I ask a question?
The engineer firm has not cost us additional money. Had they got that right, our cost opinion would have been higher. Does that make sense?
I got it. Okay, I'm tracking with you, I am tracking with you. We're not really money out of pocket.
We're not money out by that, by that omission.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question, Mike?
No.
Oh, okay. No, that kind of answered my question on there as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike, for all the information in. So...
I guess I have a question for you as clarification.
Certainly.
So, do we need to have a resolution then come before us before approving this to use the other funding stream, or no?
I think we can approve today. It's just she can't, you need a resolution then to uncommit the money, right? Or, or for us to add this project.
Uncommit and unspent, and I presume that you would bring that when we need to.
So within the next two weeks, probably not next week, within the next two weeks, I'm going to bring you a fund balance resolution for the end of the year funds anyway. At that point in time, I will adjust what I need to adjust on the resolution that committed those funds anyway. So we'll just include this in that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other questions? Thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I would move, or I would accept a motion to approve the bid, or accept the bid award for 291,459 dollars.
I actually will make a motion, it's going to read a little differently than that, but, okay. I would like to move that we accept the award, bid award, to vehicle development and construction for the Hickory Grove Beach House for 291,459 dollars with any over amount to come from the energy transfer partnership funds and all other costs associated with the construction of, of this project to come from the energy transfer funds. Here it is.
Sorry, I was writing that down.
Absolutely.
I'll approve that, or I'll second that.
Could ask for a clarification. Are you talking about, when you said the over, an over amount, did, were you meaning to talk about the 250,000, to put the number in there? Or is it over 291,000?
I, okay, so over 250,000, thank you for the question, the clarification, along with any other costs associated.
Okay, now let me ask another question. Because Mike has talked about 20,000 coming from partners. So, do you want to clarify that the partners' monies that he's identified can come, can be used as well?
And on the donations you were looking at, right? Okay, we don't...
Mike, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe, Laura, if this is where you're headed, and, and this is fine with the conservation board, but to basically say that the, again, I'm going to get wrapped up on semantics here, but that the, the general fund only, general fund excluding energy transfer fund is only the $60,000, which I believe is how we split the original 250. Did you have that in your notes, Lisa?
No.
No? It was 190 out of ETF.
That was for Dakin's Lake.
That was Dakin's Lake. Yeah, I remember that discussion too. That was Dakin's Lake, 190 and 160.
No, you're right.
That's why this beach house has totally taken me by surprise because it was not noted anywhere in the energy transfer.
Okay, so we're off that. So then, back to the funds. So I'm thinking about a way to word this. Okay, okay, I'd like to add if, for the, to say from the ETP funds or other funding as generated by conservation. That would be my addition to my motion.
So that's your amendment. Amendment. So I'd like to move that I amend that.
Right, and I would second that amendment to your motion.
Got it, Shelley? Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Olson?
Aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department reports? We do not have any department reports. We do not have any other reports. Upcoming agenda items? I do know that we will have a request regarding the Miracle Field at our next meeting. Drew, is that correct? We'll have a request about the Miracle Field at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other agenda items of note that we should add to normal agendas?
Yes, I'll be bringing forward a proposal that Story County helps subsidize the program for HERDA that allows all senior citizens in the county to take HERDA buses to and from medical grocery shopping and congregant meal sites for a donation rather than the general fare. And as the general fare price, there was, been a change in pricing for HERDA effective July 1, the general fare price went into effect for those seniors riding into or out of the AIM City limits and anywhere between two points outside of the AIM City limits, but within Story County. For our seniors who have been used to, only in these very special needs, basic necessity trips, but who have used HERDA for this, they've been able to make the trip on only a donation. And because the contractor, who had the HERDA account for a long time, had explained the subsidy money from Aging Resources differently, there were many seniors who were riding who did not understand that still a donation was really kind of needed to keep this program whole. And when Aging Resources got budget cuts, then there was less money flowing to HERDA as of July 1. So I will be bringing a proposal with a dollar amount that would include help to make up for that subsidy loss from Aging Resources in addition for a, an amount to help promote here in Story County to all our seniors who may have already heard or been told about this fair, so that they don't delay a trip or to the doctor or something because they can't afford it. So there'd be a little promotional money included with that request. So I have already spoken to the executive director, Julia, on that. Not sure she can come, all right? So, but I'll work with Alyssa on that and we'll, we'll get something before us. And my goal in bringing it next week is so that our seniors have as little time possible where they're being told or making decisions based upon the regular fare, if we approve.
Do you have any idea about whether we're going to be asked for more money at this fiscal year from HERDA for other reasons?
Sure, I don't know. I'll go ahead and give my update at this time on the HERDA.
I was just going to ask you to give an update next week along with this request.
Okay, I was going to do that here. Okay.
I'll give you the brief update.
The board met on Friday and went through the budget. We're, we did not pass the budget because we're not comfortable yet that the numbers are valid. So our board chair is in fact at HERDA today, running more numbers with staff tomorrow. Staff is, by tomorrow afternoon, staff has been asked to get everything for end of the year posted. I see Lisa left, I thought she maybe would give a sympathy grimace or something there at that point. But that, so that we know what our expenditures were for June. And then we are meeting again on the 11th. We are going to look at the budget on the 11th to ascertain if there's another ask coming to all of the counties. We also will have one of the assistant state auditors there who will be discussing their notations related to the nonposting of that amount-related insurance money. So I will be able to come back on the, let's say, the 12th, no, 16th, all right? And on the 16th, I will be able to give you the clear financial picture of HERDA at the time. We did not want to be rushed on Friday.
And my only thought is that if there's going to be asks of HERDA for additional funds for FY '20, I would like to see the whole picture.
Okay.
Okay, that's where I'm kind of concerned about, you know, I understand we've got people now who need some support. I would hope that if we provide, and, and I guess that's the thing, are we providing support to those individuals? Are we providing the support, the money to HERDA? Because I don't think, and it, I would go back to a time when we had a mental health center here that had multiple funders and it was in trouble and was asking, that mental health center was asking for assistance. What happened is there was a meeting of all the funders to see what the ask was going to be of the agency, of all of the funders. I would, if Story County is going to consider something, I think there needs to be something like that, whether it originates with HERDA staff, HERDA board, whatever. I think there needs to be a look at what is the totality of the situation? What is the totality of the resources that can be brought to the table? Rather than doing it, come to this county, then come to this county, then come to this county.
So...
And I don't know how this request would fit into that. That's all I'm saying.
Sure. Um, yeah, and I rely, okay, from the approaching about how the request, me bringing this small request, it's a small request, I mean, small related to where HERDA is financially, was just to try and really mitigate as soon as possible the issue for our seniors. Now, I will go back and talk to the executive director and find out just exactly, well, we need to treat all counties fairly, she does, all right? So until we've promised that money for the, we make up our part of the subsidy, I don't think it's fair to ask her on a, I think it's okay, to go ahead and waive that. So now back to your question. The, the actual major funders, obviously, are the Iowa Department of Transportation and the federal government for, with transportation allowance, okay? And we know because those are based on factors, two years in arrears, our funding is about two years behind on both of those. So on July 11th, then they will have gone over all the numbers and we're going to know who the two big fund, if you will, funders are. And it's based on those formulas of mileage and number of passengers, okay? So what I think you're talking about is the seven counties that make up the HERDA region and the governing board. And so we are, have all talked about that. I told them that I believed that I would be going to Story County and they needed to start thinking about what they were going to do. So if you want to postpone until we've had that meeting on the 11th, that is when your stakeholders will be at the table as far as your governing board representing the citizens of those seven counties, okay? Then I can come back with a better idea of the plan about what are we going to do about reaching out to all seven counties and to be able to subsidize. So I'm with, I'm bored with you on that. I, this one is, I'm anticipating will be about a $5,000 to $6,000 request. We know we were cut 10% by Aging Resources, but you, you've got a point about not wanting to half to death here and there on that. But I, as I said, I did speak with the executive director already and she said, yes, if you can make up the Aging Resources funds for Story County and help us promote that, we will, we will be able to continue to offer just a donation only and promote the donations from people.
And I'd be interested in what the other counties are doing on that?
Yes, right.
And if they have a comparable system to ours, or they're doing it differently.
This is all hit us very quickly, as, as I think you know. Okay, so, so we are reacting just like that. In fact, the other counties were not aware that all their seniors are going to be charged a different rate as of, of July 1. I'm the one who brought it to the board. They also had not seen the audit. I'm the one who's brought, you know, so that. So you, I'm with you, Linda, okay? I just would like to really get on top of, of what we can, but I also care. So how about we look at July 16th for the next update? And I'll have much better information. The auditor will have been there, et cetera.
That's fine. I just have a clarifying question too.
Yeah.
Are you saying that each of the counties have a different ridership amount?
Yes, from Aging Resources. The grant from Aging Resources, but it is a different amount based upon population, some other factors. But yes, HERDA does not have a uniform general fare ridership amount right now. Okay. That has to do in part with us just bringing on Dallas County and Madison and getting rid of the contractors and bringing in. That is one of the things also, we have so much to sort.
Seniors may pay, already have been paying differing amounts depending on what county they reside in.
No, the Aging Resources grant money was different for different counties, but the requirement of the Aging Resources grant was that it was a donation only. What happened in Story County, to make the, the shock more, is that when Heartland had the program and Aging Resources first gave the donation money, Heartland was promoting that since their Aging Resource money was there, don't worry about making a donation. And that's a big difference.
Sure, got you.
Between saying, could you make a donation? As I think I've already shared with you, there were 19,000 rides on this program last year and the average donation was 24 cents. That, it's a much higher average donation for the rest of the counties because they always have been told, please pay what you can. So seniors who had a little more money might be tipping in a dollar or a dollar fifty. Where... where most of our seniors clearly were not chipping in at all.
Got you, got you. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other items that you have? No, I'm out of breath.
The only item I have for the agenda is, we do need to appoint an alternate member for the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center. I'm on that board, and that was brought to my attention, that apparently in their bylaws is that we have to have an, an alternate.
I'm going to put that on the agenda then. Shelley for next one. Got that. Okay, great. I have nothing to report, except the 4th of July is coming and there are going to be a lot of parades.
Hey.
So, and other, and other festivities. So, public forum number two, I guess we combine, okay. Public forum number two, anybody from the public wanting to address us on matters not on the agenda, which we can't act on, but we'll listen. Okay, post public forum. Liaison assignments, committee meeting, updates, announcements from the supervisors, anything we haven't already discussed. Okay. Hearing nothing, I accept a motion for adjournment. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Higgins?
Aye.
Olson, aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are adjourned at 11:11.
Okay, pretty good, okay. 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 Pretty good, okay.